Your Honor, I move we approve the minutes as printed.
We have a motion of second to approve the minutes as printed. All those in favor? Opposed? So ordered.
First petition is TNT Action Sports and River Roads Hog Chapter requests permission to hold the 2013 Salvation Army Toy Run on Saturday, November 16th at 10:00 a.m., starting at 52nd Note going west to 48th, south to Main, west to 5th, and north on 5th to Vermont and west of Vermont to the Salvation Army Crux Center parking lot.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Alderman.
I move the prayer petition be granted and proper authorities notified.
Second. We have a motion of second. All those in favor? Opposed? So ordered.
By the Quincy Firefighters Local 63 requests permission to conduct a raffle and have the bond requirement waived from now through April 30th, 2014. The clerk recommends approval of the permit.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Alderman.
Could we ask a question on what this is for, the raffle?
Sure. Chief Henneck?
I looked in my, I didn't see what, exactly what it was for, plus to give him a little plug for it.
This is actually for the firefighters' union, so I really don't know a lot of details other than it's a gun raffle. They did one similar to this. I want to say it wrapped up May of this past year. So what they're doing, my understanding is they're going to be selling 1,000 tickets at $100 apiece and giving away a gun a week for a year.
Okay, so this is actually for the unions?
It's for the unions, not for the fire department.
Okay, thank you.
Did somebody make a motion?
Nope.
Okay. It's not approved. Alright, the month reports.
I move the prayer petition be granted.
Second.
We have a motion of second. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Hello, month report for actor of the city clerk, city comptroller, city treasurer, transit's line, and the September month report for Quincy Police Department.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I move the reports being received filed. Second.
We have a motion of second. All those in favor? Opposed? So ordered.
We have public forum. We have two speakers, one withdrew.
Yes. Okay, so we have our public forum tonight. The first one will be Reverend James Haley. Reverend Haley, if you could come up to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and I will remind you you have three minutes.
Good evening to everyone. I am Reverend James A. Haley III. I live at 1834 Vermont Street here in the city of Quincy, Illinois. And I am the proud pastor of Bethel African Methodist Episcopal Church, 905 Oak Street. And I'm here tonight to invite the city of Quincy, the people in this great city, as well as the mayor and alderman. Two-hour, 165th church anniversary. 1848 was when Bethel African Methodist Episcopal Church was established. It was established during the time that Quincy was known as cities of churches. And so we thank God for the rich history that we have in this city, and knowing that we have played a part in education. Not only that, we have had members to be on the alderman board. We have had elected officials in other areas. And so this is from myself as pastor of the church, and members of Bethel. I know you all know Jeanetta Green, you know Les Fonza, Ben Bumbry, and we're looking forward to a great time this coming Sunday at 4 o'clock p.m. Our special speaker guest will be our own bishop, Bishop John Richard Bryant. He is a well-known, well-traveled preacher, as well as bishop. And he will be with us on Sunday afternoon. I know that it's late for, to us to ask for a resolution, but if you can get one together, we'll be glad to have it and be able to share it at that time. God is good all the time, and all the time the Lord is good. So if he wants to be a part of this great celebration, I noticed that this past Saturday or Sunday, there was the church that celebrated 180 years. We're not too far from them with 165. And I don't think any of us was there when it began, so we all are just walking by faith and not by sight. So again, from the members of Bethel to all of the city of Quincy and Adam County, you're invited to come.
Reverend Haley, if you could get some type of wording to my secretary, she'd be more than happy to do a proclamation. I think you can get that for that day. That's no problem at all. We'd be more than happy to do it.
Okay.
Yeah. It's 228-4545, and she'll, she'll get you hooked up with one.
Okay.
I'd be more than happy to bring it.
And we would love to see some representatives from the city council. Brother Ben Bumbry was city council for many years, and we know of his, of his reputation. And so he was also part board commissioner for a while, and so we know of his reputation. And so it'd be good to have someone there that would represent the city. We know that Mr. Dooster House and, let's see, I think Dave is our alderman, so I know I will see them there.
Mark it on your calendars.
He is bad.
Are there any questions for Reverend Haley? Thank you, sir.
Alright, thank you, and God bless.
Our next speaker is Mr. Jeff Kirkoff. Mr. Kirkoff, if you could state your name and address for the record, I'll remind you you have three minutes.
Jeff Kirkoff, 1221 Spruce. Thank you for your time. With a special thanks to those that made the public forum a reality. Fifty years ago, November 22nd, our country suddenly lost its president to assassination. The national shock, sorrow, and anger was not seen again, at least at this level, until nearly 40 years later on 9/11. After winning a razor-thin victory over Vice President Nixon in 1960, JFK's inaugural speech on January 20th, 1961, addressed our founders as well as the communist threat. Quote, "I have sworn before you and Almighty God that the same solemn oath our forbears prescribed nearly a century and three-quarters ago. The world is very different now, for man holds in his mortal hands the power to abolish all forms of human poverty and all forms of human life. And yet the same revolutionary beliefs for which our forbears fought are still at issue around the globe. The belief that the rights of man come not from the generosity of the state, but from the hand of God. Let every nation know, whether it wishes us well or ill, that we shall pay any price, bear any burden, meet any hardship, support any friend, oppose any foe, in order to assure the survival and success of liberty." Unquote. Like Thomas Jefferson, JFK strongly supported a free press, which is shown in his April 27th, 1961 speech to Newspaper Publishers Association in New York City. Quote, "Without debate, without criticism, no administration and no country can succeed, and no republic can survive. That is why the Athenian lawmaker Salon decreed it a crime for any citizen to shrink from controversy. And that is why our press is protect, was protected by the First Amendment, the only business in America specifically protected by the Constitution. And so it is to the printing press, to the recorder of man's deeds, and the keeper of his conscience, the courier of this news, that we look for strength and assistance, confident that with your help, man will be what he is born to be, free and independent." Unquote. President Kennedy knew that one of the best ways to hold, help the poor was to have less poor. Thus, he supported sharp business individual tax cuts to grow the economy. For individuals with Congress's help, the top rate was cut from 91% to 70%, leading to the go-go 60s. On December 14th, 1962, JFK made his case to the Economic Club of New York. Quote, "In short, it is the paradoxical truth that tax rates are too high and the tax revenues are too low, and the soundest way to raise revenue in the long run is to cut the tax rates now. For on the strength of a free economy rests the hope of all free nations. We shall not fail in that hope. For free men and free nations must prosper, and they must prevail." Unquote. Sadly, JFK did not live to see the tremendous results of his tax cutting and his other efforts. Thank you for your time, and may he rest in peace.
Are there any questions? Thank you, Mr. Kirkoff.
Please, Jeff.
Appreciate it.
We need to receive and file the proclamation.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So ordered.
The first resolution is Central Service Director and Central Service Committee recommend approval of the low quote of truck component services at Stafford, Missouri, in the amount of $5,530.13 for the repair of the hydraulic system, garbage truck number 52.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Alderman Sassen.
I move to adopt the resolution. Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt the resolution. Are there any questions? Hearing none. Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Gill.
Aye.
Mann.
Aye.
Dooster House.
Aye.
Bauer.
Aye.
Holbrook.
Aye.
Havermile.
Aye.
Farha.
Aye.
Sasson.
Aye.
Ryan. Lupper.
Aye.
Mussolino.
Aye.
Brink.
Aye.
Heinecke.
Aye.
Hozlog.
Aye.
Thirteen ayes, one absent.
Resolution is adopted.
Our next resolution is Central Service Director and Central Service Committee recommend approval of the low quote of global emergency products of Aurora, Illinois, in the amount of $3,157.03 to replace the radiator in the Pierce forcer pump number 05-38.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Alderman Sassen.
I move to adopt this resolution. Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt the resolution. Are there any questions? Hearing none. Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Gill.
Aye.
Mann.
Aye.
Dooster House.
Aye.
Bauer.
Aye.
Holbrook.
Aye.
Havermile.
Aye.
Farha.
Aye.
Sasson.
Aye.
Ryan. Lupper.
Aye.
Mussolino.
Aye.
Brink.
Aye.
Heinecke.
Aye.
Hello, I'm Meyer, Metcalf, ESPN.com. Here with Oklahoma State star Marcus Smart at Big 12 Media Day in Kansas City. How excited are you for, you know, your second year and all the talent you all coming back at Oklahoma State and just the potential that this team has? I'm ecstatic, but you know, like you said, we do have a lot of people coming back with a lot of talent.
Yes, Alderman.
I move to adopt the resolution. Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt the resolution. Are there any questions? Hearing none. Clerk, please call the roll.
Obviously, the big decision with you, you know, in the offseason, a lot of people thought you were gonna go pro, could've been a lottery pick. Why'd you come back? You know, there's a lot of decisions and circumstances that, you know, cause me to come back.
Musolino.
Aye.
Brink.
Aye.
Heinecke.
Aye.
Hozlog.
Aye.
Thirteen ayes, one absent.
The resolution is adopted.
Next resolution is Utilities Director recommending approval of the invoice from Reese Construction Company in the amount of $8,461.53 for repair of sewer line on South 21st between Payson and Ohio.
LeBron Marquell, some other talented guys on that roster. How good can Oklahoma State be this year?
We have a motion and a second to adopt the resolution. Are there any questions? Hearing none. Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Gill.
Aye.
Mann.
Aye.
Dooster House.
Aye.
Bauer.
Aye.
Holbrook.
Aye.
Havermile.
Aye.
Farha.
Aye.
Sasson.
Aye.
Ryan. Lupper.
Aye.
Mussolino.
Aye.
Brink.
Aye.
Heinecke.
Aye.
Hozlog.
Aye. Obviously, a lot of buzz with your team, but a lot of buzz about guy Lawrence Kansas Andrew Wiggins and what he can do for that team. Is that motivating, you know, to know that Kansas is sort of regrouped and that they're gonna be a tough team as well?
Oh, definitely. You know, Kansas is one of those teams. And tip expenditures for Newcombe emergency demolition, the amount of $56,142.52 paid from the TIF account, and we do have requests to speak on this matter.
Definitely thank you for your time.
Yes, Alderman.
ESPN.com, Marcus Smart.
We have a motion and a second to suspend the rules. All those in favor?
Our goal is to win the championship. I want it all best.
Mr. Austin, state your name and address. Mavs Thunder at 9:30, Wednesday on ESPN.
My name's Brett Austin. I live at 1226 Cabaret Ridge in Quincy, Illinois.
Discover Card how can I help you?
Oh, you're real?
You know I'm real. At Discover, we're always here to talk. Because I don't have time for machines. Some companies just don't appreciate the power of conversation. You know I like you. I like you too.
At Discover, we treat you like you treat you. Get the it card and talk to a real person.
Five minutes still remaining. He drops it off to the safety valve. Freeman, he's got room. Twenty, fifteen, ten, end zone, touchdown, Florida State.
With a point after, I'm Jim Baschel. With half of the top 10 off this week, premier matchups were few and far between. There were trio games, though, between ranked teams, none bigger than Miami at Florida State.
One and only source of funds for the rest of the demolition. Over the past month, it has come to light that this building did not have a bound commercial property insurance policy, and it is likely that no money will be able to be recouped from insurance proceeds after this event. As a person who owns many downtown properties, that is a difficult thing to accept. There's not one property that we own that would be allowed to go even one day without both commercial property and general liability insurance in place. In fact, lack of insurance on any one of our properties would enact a mortgage acceleration clause where the bank could immediately call our note due or foreclose if we could not pay. In addition, we are not talking about an event that happened in an instant or without notice. We are talking about roughly 14 years of ownership through the current owners group and owners around them through many events, including roof failure, structural issues, and even a partial building collapse within a couple of months of the fire, where this non-insurance issue should have come to light. It is simply unacceptable that this situation was allowed to continue for that period of time. I've heard comments that the building was uninsurable, but I would argue that that is not completely accurate. The building was uninsurable at normal rates because it was vacant, yes, but nothing is uninsurable if you negotiate and purchase the correct policy. The city could have and should have enforced a policy on this property at a high-risk rate, just like a bank would do if they found themselves in the same situation. Even if a policy would have been roughly $10,000 a year for all of the years of the current ownership, that would have been roughly $150,000, and we could be way ahead of where we are at now. Plus, those premiums would have been something that could have been put into a lawsuit against the owner and possibly recoup. The option of this is that the TIF fund will be leaned on to pay somewhere between $430,000 and $450,000 for total demolition of this property, which depletes the reserves of those accounts for close to a year. Those funds are very much needed for infrastructure improvements in the downtown. And in addition, without the capacity to have some reserve in the TIF accounts, it limits the city's ability to actively recruit positive development in the TIF area. Suffice to say, this is not just about the money lost today, but about the potential for the opportunity we'll lose tomorrow. Looking to the future, I think there are a lot of lessons that can be learned from this situation, and maybe a few things we can do differently. One, the city should not be involved in direct developments for private development. Enterprise rather should be used programs at their disposal effectively, and should partner with local lending institutions to do diligence for gatekeepers, as that is their area of expertise. Two, I would strongly urge the city council and the mayor to entertain the idea of a formal committee, much likely revolving loan fund committee, to vet potential projects and to prioritize them. Vet committee consisting of city council members, other taxing bodies, and private citizens. And finally, all monies that are generated from any material salvage, resale of the lot at some point, and if possible, any settlements against the current owner should be paid back directly to the TIF fund first. If there are any remaining funds above the demolition costs, those could be paid back to the general fund to offset the losses on the building loan. Thank you for your time, and I can answer any questions.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Alderman.
I have a couple, a statement and then a question. Brett, I'm very sensitive to what you're saying here, but I think looking back in hindsight's pretty easy to do. I appreciate your concerns for the TIF district, but as you said, this was a, this was something that happened over a matter of years. And again, we could all point fingers at other administrations, we could point fingers at other councils, we can point fingers at ourselves. I don't think that's productive. I think looking back at mistakes we made is a good thing, but, you know, being lectured about what we should and should not do is not something I enjoy. And you're entitled to your opinion. The other thing is a question I had about your committee is, what would be the purpose of the committee again that you suggest?
I'd like to see the projects and several other people have brought this up too. It's not just an original idea to me. I'd like to see, much like the revolving loan fund committee, you have to come and you have to present your idea and vet those ideas. That would give an opportunity to put them in a priority list of where they might rank in what we could do downtown, because we have several infrastructure things that are much higher than what other people's projects might be. And I think that would give everyone a good opportunity to plead their case for what they are. I agree with your statement. I don't like to be lectured either, but this is over a long period of time, and there's no doubt that there's some, there's some essence in that this needs to be stated again because I do feel that we are starting to creep away from some of the original intent of the TIF district money.
Right. Well, I think we've talked about that before, you and I, and I think we have a bit of a disagreement on TIF, but we'll just leave that at that. But anyway, thank you, Brett. I appreciate it.
Okay.
I do have a question.
Yes, Alderman Farr.
But I'm, maybe I'm, there's a nuance here I don't quite understand. Isn't that part of the role of, and I'm not trying to be argumentative, isn't that part of the role of the Historic Business District? I mean, don't they set priorities as to what, it seems to me over the last 15 years, every time there's been a major project, whether it's this representative of the Historic Business District or others, they've always been involved in these decisions. So what you're asking for, to me, seems a little bit redundant.
Two things have happened in the recent timeframe. There's been a couple of projects that have come up out of kind of the clear blue, I would say, and they jump priority over things that were already agreed on. That's one aspect of just thinking about this as an idea. I'm not saying it's perfect. I'm just saying, think about it as an idea. Secondly, the money's becoming more and more. There's going to be, it's gonna increase, and it's gonna get to be a larger pool. And with that larger pool, is gonna get to be more opportunities for things that we could do at a higher level, and those things need to be discussed. I mean, I'd like to see some people think about a little bit larger projects, things that are out on the horizon that really add to the infrastructure of the downtown, and not just, this is a sidewalk we need to fix, this is a curb we need to fix. So there's a couple, there's a short-sighted way to just say, let's rank things on what people's priorities are. But there's a longer-term aspect in it. What really works for the downtown? How are we planning ourselves?
Yes, Alderwoman.
Who was the one that moved projects around in order? I mean, I guess I'm a little confused on that, where you said just recently we had a few different projects planned and then some. Are we moving? Is the city moving things around, or is somebody, I mean, I guess I'm confused on all of this.
And I would, I would just take it back to the item on the agenda that we're talking about, TIF funds for the Newcombe. We can have that discussion at another time.
Sure. The TIF funds for the demolition certainly becomes a priority number one above all other projects that were in line. To say that you're gonna use money for an emergency demolition, I don't think there's a lot of people that are gonna argue with that. I'm certainly not arguing with it. It's unfortunate that it has to come on the heels of sort of covering for other things that weren't in place.
The number 15 team in our ESPN.com Top 25 rankings, Wichita State.
The bigger part is the secondary part about it.
And Wichita State shocked the rest of.
About the total demolition, that, you know, we're gonna have to get to a point of a vacant lot at some point, and where's this money coming from? It's almost that the money is just as a default, we're looking at the TIF. That really shouldn't be the way it is. There should be other priorities in place for where this, where this money comes from to do this demolition. I'm sticking to the point that you asked me to, but suffice to say, there are other times when projects have come up that were not in the queue, I guess you would say, of priorities, and I would like to make sure that we're all on the same page with those things.
Alderman Brink.
Brett, just a couple of comments. First, your first recommendation was to have participation loans with the city. I think we've been doing that since 2005.
Yeah, I was going really quick to get it in under five minutes, but there's a statement on what I got here, which is, I would commend the city that they already made that change. So that it actually has been a change. My revolving loan fund loans that we have for our buildings have always been participation loans.
And any participation loan would require forced place insurance.
Yes.
If they defaulted. So the city has covered that base.
The city has covered that base for some time, yes. As long as they don't go back and do it the old way again.
And your recommendation number two, I would agree with Alderman Farrha, is that, you know, the Quincy Business District, currently, that's one of their roles that they serve for us, is to develop a comprehensive plan for the downtown. And I think they do that very well with their annual report and so forth. So I don't know what we would add to it. Then your recommendation number three would be, is make it clear that you're saying that we should not use TIF funds for the $59,000?
No, I'm not saying that at all. I'm saying, obviously, you have to, and I think at this point, you already have to, I think the writing's on the wall. I think you have to use the TIF funds for the total demolition. But what I'm saying is, if that's the scenario that we find ourselves in, back to what Alderman Havermile said, we can point fingers at the past. I'm not really trying to do that. I was trying to give a historical case of how we got here. I'm trying to end with a positive thing. The positive thing is, let's use the money for what we have to do now, but let's not find ourselves in this situation again. In this case particularly, if there's any positive to be got out of this at the end, if we can sue the owner, if we can sell the lot, if we can salvage bricks or wood or whatever, let's put that money back in the TIF fund first because we're using that money in a way that maybe it didn't even have to be used if these other insurance things would have been in place. So I'm just asking you to put it backwards in reverse order. Put the money back where it came from first, because I think that's important to our development in the downtown.
So the basic question, the basic request you're making tonight is to, if we sell the lot, that the money goes back into the TIF funds?
Yeah, and not a general fund and not to be used somewhere else, because really the only reason the TIF fund had to be used in this case was the historical context that I gave before, which was, the insurance wasn't in place to cover it. So let's put it back in the order of which you took it out.
Thank you.
Are there any additional questions? I'll entertain a motion to resume sitting as city council.
So moved.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Opposed? We are now sitting as a city council.
Motion to adopt.
We entertain a motion on your resolution.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Alderman.
I move for adoption of the resolution.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt the resolution. Are there any questions? Hearing none. Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Gill.
Aye.
Mann.
Aye.
Dooster House.
Aye.
Bauer.
Aye.
Holbrook.
Aye.
Havermile.
Aye.
Farha.
Aye.
Sasson.
Aye.
Ryan. Lupper.
Aye.
Mussolino.
Aye.
Brink.
Aye.
Heinecke.
Aye.
Hozlog.
Aye.
Thirteen ayes, one absent.
The resolution is adopted.
I have the finance report. Transfers to be $88,500. Expenditures to be $482,380.24. And payroll to be $704,376.96. Farha, Havermile, Sasson, Hozlog Committee.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Alderman.
I move the report we received and the vouchers issued for the various amounts.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Gill.
Aye.
Mann.
Aye.
Dooster House.
Aye.
Bauer.
Aye.
Holbrook.
Aye.
Havermile.
Aye.
Farha.
Aye.
Sasson.
Aye.
Ryan. Lupper.
Aye.
Mussolino.
Aye.
Brink.
Aye.
Heinecke.
Aye.
Hozlog.
Aye.
Thirteen ayes, one absent.
So ordered. Any additional business, Madam Clerk?
No.
Alderman Gill, any new business?
No new business.
Alderwoman Mann.
No, sir.
Alderman Dooster House.
No new business, right.
Alderman Bauer.
Yes, I got one to send to traffic. Study the intersection of Ninth and Spring for possible stop signs or four-way, or three-way stop there.
Second. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So ordered. Any additional business? Alderman Holbrook.
None, Your Honor.
Alderman Havermile.
No new business, but Director Conte, can I see you after the meeting, please? So I don't, we got an executive session, so we can do that right before that, but I just[1665.76]
just need to see you for a couple minutes. Thank you.
Just one. I want to congratulate both the Notre Dame and football teams, and the high school, Quincy High football teams, and congratulate them on the playoff win. Very good weekend for the city of Quincy. And both games will be here in our hometown 3:00 on Saturday, so I hope everybody will go out and support both of our high school teams.
Veterans parade.
And that's a good point. We have a veterans parade Saturday morning at 10:00 downtown. Starts at 12th Street, ends on 5th. And we'll also have another veterans parade at the Vets Home at 1:00. So I'd encourage all those who can participate to participate, to show your appreciation. I know we'll be honoring some Korean War veterans there. And also, if you can participate, bring any children down there and show your appreciation of the troops. Alderman Far.
No, thank you.
Alderman Sassen.
No, sir.
Alderwoman Lupper.
No, thank you, Your Honor.
Alderman Mussolino.
Yes, Your Honor, I have several things here. In light of Notre Dame football's success, game Saturday, I would like to make a motion to close South Ninth Street from Jackson to Van Buren on Saturday, November 9th, from 11:00 AM to 7:00 PM.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So ordered.
And I also wanted to welcome one of the newest constituents to the sixth board. His name is Carson Dennis Huner. He only weighs about seven pounds at the moment, but I'm the proud uncle, and so I just wanted to welcome him to the community.
He'll be voting in no time. Alderman Brink.
No, thank you, Your Honor.
Alderwoman Heinecke.
Yes, sir. I'm going to refer to traffic. Accident at 12th and Vermont. Have that fixed somehow.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Opposed? So ordered. Any additional business? Alderman Hozlock.
Yes, I have a couple. Blessed Sacrament School would like to have an Hag Day, November 7th. They'd like to shut 7th Street between Adams and Monroe, and barricades will be needed